Good evening. I called the Planning Commission regular meeting to order at 6:30 PM. It is Thursday, October 19th, and we are located here in the Council Chambers at City Hall. So, welcome. And the first item of business is roll call. So, I will start on my right tonight.
Matthew Petrich.
Jane Garrison.
Eric Brooks.
Shannon Collins.
Larry Grandal.
Nancy Anderson.
Roshi No Pharoah.
Excellent. So, all seven of us are here tonight. So, that is a quorum. The next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there any objection to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. And the next item of business is the approval of the minutes. So, is there any objection to approving the minutes from October 5th, 2017? Okay. If there are no objections, then the minutes are approved for October 5th, 2017. And the next item of business tonight is public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public could speak on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight on a non-agenda item? Ms. Victor? There's light.
There's light.
I should have a PowerPoint, Kevin. My name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish, Washington. And I wanted to start tonight. I've been using the Sammamish property tool the last couple of meetings, so I think you guys have seen it. I'm just doing screen captures from that. And when my presentation gets up, I'll be able to show that. So, the maps, I'm speaking as a non-agenda.
Mary, I'm sorry. Can you move your microphone just a little bit? It's just not, it's not done.
They're on landslide hazard.
That's better.
So, the purple area is erosion. Our bodies. And I'm going to take some of those away. So, I wanted you to note that the landslide hazard areas are not fully covered up by the erosion hazard areas. And that's my concern because I happen to live in one of those, but I'm not talking about that tonight. So, I take off the landslide hazard, which doesn't actually show up on this screen. I take off the landslide hazard area. That leaves you with the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies and no disturbance area, which is pink. So, that kind of underlays the overlay of the slashed area. If you do turn on erosion, so this is without erosion, this is with erosion, it's a little bit hard to see because it's a really light thing. That's also not really pertinent to my talk tonight, so I'm not going to turn that on but one more time. So, if we're looking here, like I said, you have the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies and non-disturbance area. I've only shown kind of the left side of Sammamish because it doesn't occur anywhere else, and so I cut off the map to the right. So, if we zoom in, so on that top one, if you zoom in, the three pieces on the bottom part of that third piece or the first top piece, you can see a close-up of it. So, you can see the shape. And if I put the erosion on again, you'll see it just covers it up. And then if I zoom in, so this is one more zoom in, so you can actually see the parcel sizes. This is the non-disturbance area, erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies in purple. And then the orange part is the landslide hazard area, and that's the landslide hazard drainage area. So, I want you to keep this shape in mind as I go to the next slide. The road that goes through the middle of the slide there is Inglewood Hill Road. So, you can see north of that and south of that. And the reason I chose that is it's an old historic platte and most of the lots already exist. And then this is your vacant lands map. So, if you have this picture in your mind, and you see the vacant lands, you still see the Inglewood Hill Road there? So, north of Inglewood Hill Road, there are about 50 blue lots, which are all vacant, tracks or lots. And south of that is about 40 lots. So, there, altogether, you have about 90 lots, which I would consider to be a subdivision or even a major subdivision. And the questions that I have is for the no disturbance area, there is no subdivision allowed, which is a major subdivision, which is 10 lots or more. I just clarified before the meeting with the esteemed David Pyle, who is the Deputy Public, or Public, excuse me, Planning Director, Community Development. And then I, so short plats, even if you were to turn a lot into two lots or nine lots, that would be covered under something you can't do in the disturbance area. One of the reasons you define the NDA areas, you're supposed to identify slopes that pose hazards, look at risks for erosion, and how not to degrade water quality or improve it or make it better. And I guess my question is, since tonight they're talking about the pilot and the subdivision rules, I really think the city needs to look at the impact of multiple lots that are developed as new single-family homes, which are allowed sort of under exceptions exemptions, because I believe they can have as big an impact or more than like a short platte, which is only two to nine homes, or a major subdivision, which is 10 or more. And you can see with 90 lots there, it's a concern. So, what I passed out here to you is the East Lake-Sammamish Basin Plan. 1994 is adopted as city policy for management of stormwater. And you'll notice in here, it talks about standards to reduce water pollution and erosion in the Monahan drainages and also in the Panhandle, and treat them in water quality facilities and pipe them down the west slope. And if we're going with individual lot building, how is that getting done if people aren't tightlining it? And I have one second.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in the non-agenda public comment section tonight? Okay. So, I'll close that time for public comment. And the next item of my business is old business. And the topic for old business tonight is, hang on one second. The erosion hazards near sensitive water bodies overlay no disturbance area pilot program. And we do have a public hearing tonight. So, the order of events is that staff will give a brief presentation. After that, I will open the public hearing. We'll hear from the public. We'll close the public hearing. Then the commission will make a motion and deliberate on that motion. And then we will move on to the next item of business. So, there we go. So, I will, with that, I'll turn it over to staff. And tonight, it's Mr. Pyle giving the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Collins, members of the commission. David Pyle, Deputy Director, Community Development Department. We are here tonight to continue our discussions around the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies no disturbance area pilot program that was previously included in the code under SMC 21A 50-225 subsection 5. We're here tonight to hold a public hearing, deliberate on the proposed elimination of the program, the pilot program, and then to take action. As you're aware, we had previously started this conversation with a brief overview on the city's environmentally critical areas rules. We then went through discussion around the program itself at the last meeting, and we're here tonight for a public hearing and to take action on the proposed removal of the program. Here's a brief layout of the calendar to date. So, the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies no disturbance area pilot program was added to the city's municipal code back in 2013 through adoption of the updated environmentally critical areas rules. The environmentally critical areas rules went through quite a bit of discussion. There's a lot of deliberation around different components. And the pilot program was not made effective until March of 2017 because it required a corresponding update to the city's shoreline master program that had to be ultimately approved by the Washington State Department of Ecology, which took a few years to get through process and ultimately was approved by Ecology and made effective on March of 2017. Following that, there were some concerns cited around the effectiveness and the adequacy of the pilot program and whether the subdivision of the no disturbance area was appropriate. The city council declared an emergency and adopted interim development regulations that effectively struck the pilot program from SMC 21A 50. So, the pilot program was removed for use at that point. The city council asked that the city staff work with the planning commission to identify the best path forward. City staff came back to the planning commission with a proposal to remove the pilot program from the city's code to make it permanent. And we have held a brief discussion, I guess, a discussion on this the last meeting. I'm going to do a brief recap of that. The purpose of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay is important because it identifies that the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay is really there in place to protect some of our sensitive water bodies or sensitive water features in the city from increased sediment loads that result from development. And the intent behind that is to limit the amount of impact or surface disturbance to those sites that might have soils that are susceptible to a higher rate of erosivity. The erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay is broken into two categories, the no disturbance area and the properties draining to the no disturbance area. This is a map that shows the city's erosion hazard areas, the city's erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies areas, and the no disturbance area. As you can see, the area that is in the, I guess it's the red or orange, I can't quite figure out what that color is, is the area that drains to the no disturbance area. So, the two areas that I was citing in this slide, the no disturbance area and the properties draining to the no disturbance area are the orange-colored areas in this map. The erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay no disturbance area restricts development, but it does allow for some specific development activities to occur, such as new single-family residences, utility corridors, and other public amenities. It also had previously allowed for work authorized pursuant to the pilot program, which allowed for subdivision. The pilot program was a limited-duration program that allowed for up to a maximum of four subdivision projects. And it had fairly restrictive limitations on what could be done and some of the requirements around how stormwater was to be managed in the short term, and especially it focused on management of stormwater in the long term. Our conclusion and analysis after looking at the pilot program is that the cost of the pilot program caused, the cost of subdivision through the pilot program is very high and that because of the cost, that it limits application to larger subdivisions that can actually absorb the cost, and that larger subdivisions are actually counterintuitive to the purpose behind the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies no disturbance area. Because larger projects are more prone to causing erosion impacts, and as we discussed during the last meeting, they are much harder to manage during the construction phase. And we have some experience with that, and we talked about that at the last meeting. So, our conclusion is, is that large-scale subdivision within the no disturbance area is not appropriate because it presents a high level of erosion risk and is contrary to the intent of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay and the no disturbance area rules. Our recommendation is to permanently remove the pilot program from the city's shoreline or from the city's municipal code, SMC 21A 50-225. So, after the planning commission holds a public hearing and deliberates and takes action, the next steps would be is that this would be referred to the city council for review with a schedule as outlined here. We are proposing to take it back, to take it to the city council on November 6th and to continue that discussion with the city council through November 21st. The suggested motion for the evening is to move, move to recommend to the city council the permanent removal of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay no disturbance area pilot program from SMC 21A 50-225 after you hold a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. Are there any questions on the staff's presentation? Okay. Then I, I will now open the public hearing. I have three names on the list, so we'll go through those first. And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, they can certainly do so. During the public hearing, each person has seven minutes to speak. That's right, right? I'm to make sure. It's not five, it's seven. So, the first person to speak, I'm thinking it's either Javier or Jarver, I'm not sure. Eastman is the last name. James. Oh, sorry about that. It's okay. Just state your name and address, please.
Yep. James Eastman. I own property along 196th Avenue Northeast. I am also representing Pamphalo Morelli, an older gentleman who'd have loved to have been here tonight, but he's 82 years old, and this kind of stresses him out a little bit. So, I'm here to talk about the no disturbance zone. And it's really important that we actually understand what the no disturbance zone is. It has to do with erosion, and it's within the erosion hazard sensitive water body overlay. Contrary to city council comments, when they enacted this emergency moratorium, this has nothing to do with steep slopes. It's very important to understand that. And this has nothing to do with landslide or seismic hazards. This strictly has to do with erosion. So, this no disturbance zone was put into place in mid to late 1990s. And really what it was, was a regulatory taking of property. My neighbor Pamphalo Morelli bought his land in the 60s. It was zone R4. Many landowners throughout the city in the fell swoop of a black Sharpie marker. They had 10 acres zoned for 40 houses. All of a sudden, go down to one. To make matters worse, he had already entered in, LID was passed on his property for 40 water and sewer connections that were rendered useless. He had paid for those. We passed a city LID, and you don't pay for those, they foreclose on your property. The mapping done on this was done, just real general mapping for this no disturbance area. I already talked about it last time I was here, but it was poor. On that note, though, I'd like to thank David and Jeff. I sent them an email last minute to see if I could meet with them to go over the mapping. And they sat down with me and Pamphalo and explained it all to us, and we know what we need to do to make sure the mapping actually reflects what's on site. So, thank you. You know, the biggest thing is there's no data. There's never been any data to back the current no disturbance zone code. And I'm going to get into that. But two nights ago at the city council meeting, we heard about how important data is in this Growth Management Act. You can't pass codes that aren't backed by any data, and there never has been in backing this no disturbance zone. Commissioner Brooks, last meeting you asked if there was an example of a pilot program ever taking place. And the answer to that question is yes, yes, there was. Here it is. Old Mill Point, Weaver's Ridge, Chris Alice Estates. This is on the far north end of our city. And this platte that I have, all those houses basically, were part of 123-lot platte that went through King County. And here are the hearing examiner's comments that actually looked into the data of this no disturbance area. Okay. He says there's a stream on this property. You see the stream in the far left-hand corner. Here's what he said about this, well, the environmental impact statement said about the stream. Said it deposits 500 tons of sediment each year into Lake Sammamish, 700 kilograms of phosphorus annually into Lake Sammamish. Keep in mind, this is kind of a peaked area. There's no other houses that are doing that. This is just that flow of the water coming from that area. So, by leaving the land just how it was, environmental impact statement basically says we're polluting Lake Sammamish. Okay. By actually constructing the land on the land and building this platte with sediment and erosion control measures done under early 1990s stormwater design manner, I mean, this was a long time ago. They figured they'd get rid of all the 700 kg of phosphorus and sediment as well. And so, your net improvement is quite a bit if you do the math. Okay. So, this is a guy challenging him from Lake Sammamish on, you know, how they figure the numbers. And basically, the hearing examiner said, no matter how you look at this, no matter how you look at this or figure the numbers, no matter what, this is a net benefit. Developing this platte is a net benefit to Lake Sammamish. You're taking the water off of the erosive stream beds that are dumping tons of sediment and phosphor in the lake. You're putting it through sand filters, you're treating it for phosphorus, and you're piping it down the hill directly into the lake. So, and then in the data that you receive from the city, you know, the concern with the erosion hazard overlay no disturbance zone has nothing to do with the platte in its current state. It has to do while it's under construction. So, this is the data that said, look, if we took no erosion control best practices or measures during the construction of this platte, maybe we get 25 to 30 tons additional. That's still 470 tons less sediment that's going into the lake every year by not doing anything. And we're taking, in their 2016 stormwater design manner, we're taking all kinds of measures that weren't around back then. And he says if you do do something, then you're going to reduce that number by 90%, which is what they did, and it's all in there. So, right now, it's all connected. The stormwater goes down that pipe off the hill. It's a great example of how, you know, we should be developing. I guess I'm running out of time. Is that seven minutes? Have I gone that long? Okay. Right now, we're discharging tons of water from the top of Sammamish onto the hillside. I mean, this is no different. I was out there today. That pipe was running when it was barely raining out. Could you imagine what that pipe's doing when it's pouring down hard, when all the ponds are full? Look at, I mean, look at all those streams. Where's that all coming from? You know, that red line is the dividing line, the continental divide. Where's all that water coming from? It's stormwater. It's streams or ponds overflowing. It's water coming out of the ground, you name it. And it's flowing unchecked all the way into the lake, causing sediment and erosion. So, to repeal this code without any data is unbelievable. I mean, the data clearly.
Please wrap it up. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person to speak tonight is Caroline Goulding.
Hello. My name is Caroline Goulding, and I live at 19338 Southeast 21st Street, Sammamish. Thank you. I want to thank the council tonight for taking into consideration of dissolving and removing the pilot program. I am joined tonight by neighborhood and friends, raise your hands, who are all very concerned about the pilot program. My biggest question is, and I'm not a scientist, but I don't understand why something would be considered a no disturbance zone or area. And then, I've always been told no means no. So, why are we even considering developing in that area? We've experienced the most extreme weather last year, or I should say this year than we've ever seen, you know, with more rain and more heat in our region, which is going to mean once again more extreme conditions, erosion, landslides. We've seen what's happening in California. Obviously, I just think it's really important that for a community that we acknowledge these extreme conditions, we take care of our land, and we really consider, once again, not building on these areas that should not be disturbed because they're around sensitive areas of water. And I thank you once again for taking into consideration removing the pilot program.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you all for joining us tonight. The next person to speak is Dennis Malone. No? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Ms. Victor?
I am Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast still. I just wanted to say some things about the pilot program. There was a piped version allowed or a low-impact development, which is infiltration techniques. And no one was doing the infiltration because it took so much of the land, and it was so hard to do, and no one was interested in doing it. And whenever the city does allow development, that water needs to get down the hill some way. So, if development is going to be allowed, be it however they're built, I think a piped version is the best way to do it. So, and when you don't do that, areas like Inglewood and Tamarack, we've had the development, and there haven't been the tightline pipes. And that is causing problems. So, you've actually been doing a pilot without declaring it as a pilot for low-impact development infiltration because that's what's been happening. So, I think you need to think about that. And I just also think with the amount of land that's available in this city, we do have enough land within this city to meet the growth, the growth and development goals and the targets that are given to us by the GMA. So, I think the city should find ways, either through purchasing of development rights or setting aside open space or TDRs or other things. So, people that want to develop or feel like they have to develop to get the money out, if there's another avenue for them to do, that would be acceptable. Otherwise, it is a taking of lands, or you're letting people not develop. And if they are going to develop, there needs to be a way for the stuff to get down to the lake safely. And doing that in a pipe system is the best way to do it, particularly like that paper that I passed out, particularly if it has flow control and if it has water quality treatment. So, I think you need to consider that there is going to be growth happening. How should that be handled? And I think a pipe is the best mechanism, whether or not it's allowed in that NDA area or not. Also, if you're using infiltration above the NDA area or above landslide, you're putting water into the soils, and that's affecting the stability of your slopes. And that affects the ability, like a 50% to 70% slope in a landslide hazard area might be stable if it's dry. If you put water into it, it can make it only as stable as a 15% or 30% slope. So, you end up increasing risks when you're doing infiltration. And I know the city's looking at smaller development happening and using low-impact development and best management practices and all that. But it's putting water into the soil. So, you're clearing the land, the trees aren't soaking up the water, you're trying to get it to run off the surface, you're putting it into the soils, and then it's going to go down, it's going to pop out somewhere. It just doesn't disappear unless you're really lucky, and it really depends on the soils and where you are. So, those are things and data I think that you could, should consider when you're doing your discussions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd speak, like to speak during the public hearing this evening? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. It is now closed, and I will entertain a motion from a commissioner.
I'll go ahead and make the motion here. I move to recommend to the city council the permanent removal of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay no disturbance area pilot program from Sammamish Municipal Code 21A dot 50 dot 225.
A second.
Okay. There is a motion and a second to recommend to city council the permanent removal of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay no disturbance area pilot program from SMC 21A 50-225. I'm opening it up for deliberation. If anyone, I mean, we don't have to deliberate, even if you just want to state your opinion or why you are in favor of the motion. That's perfectly fine as well.
Or against.
Or against. I'm sorry. Commissioner Petrich?
Yeah. Thank you. Wow, this thing's suddenly working really well. I, I think it's important, in my own understanding of this, that, I support the removal of the pilot program. I think I understand that it is sort of antithetical to what city council was trying to do when they created the program, you know, or the actualization of it is sort of antithetical. It's important to me, though, that it's understood that this, if we end up. It's important to me, though, that it's understood that this, if we end up recommending the removal of this pilot program, that it's, the conversation's not over with, and that we're not foreclosing forever the discussion of, you know, potentially a different pilot program that works differently or something, you know. And I guess I, I feel for people who own land that maybe have, you know, like if, if the example, you know, is, is common at all tonight, of the 10 acres that was purchased and, you know, 40 houses were planned, and now they only get one. I would support working on potentially something in the future that would provide some sort of relief. So, there you have it.
Is any, is anyone in process now with a pilot program? Is there anything?
It's my understanding that no applications have been filed.
No.
Would the removal of the pilot program make any difference to, still, I'm clear, make any difference to the NDS designation? It's, it's really two different, kind of two different issues? I mean, it's still an NDS.
Do you mean the NDA?
Or NDA, right, right. Sorry, too many acronyms here.
It, it does not change the definition of the NDA or the application location of the NDA?
Right. So, okay, so the applicability of the NDA is mentioned by the one gentleman, still up for further definition in the future or whatever, this really has no impact on that at all.
We have a, a map that generalizes the location, anticipated location of a no disturbance area within the city, and we would work with property owners on a case-by-case basis to clarify the exact location of the boundary of the no disturbance area.
As I read through the, the brief, the, it seemed to me that the pilot program didn't consider the earlier phases of construction, which is one of the biggest contradictions from what I read to the regulations that are meant to preserve water quality, right?
That, it, there is some consideration given to the earlier phases, although the complexity lies in the fact that there are, the pilot program and the later phases and permanent infrastructure requirements that go along with the two subdivisions that would have been allowed under the tightline option attract much larger projects that are inherently much more complex to manage and are prone to failure due to mismanagement or due to the simple scale of what's going on. That, that the, although it does address it somewhat within the pilot program, that, it doesn't address it to the extent that it would help in the event of a larger project.
I guess finally, I echo Ms. Commissioner Petrich's idea of continuing to explore ways for people to pull the value out of that land that, that we're all trying to preserve for kind of the common good, I suppose, so.
I support the removal of the pilot program, but I think from hearing from everybody, I think there's kind of two things that stand out to me, is that, one, there are people who own land on this slope who would like to develop it, and would really like to figure out, okay, now, what do I do? And then, secondly, there are people who live down the hill from this land, along the lake, and who are very concerned about water running down the lake and into their backyards and putting their property in jeopardy. It seems that we have a lot of work to do as to how we can remove the water that's coming down the slope safely and into the lake, and where it's not depositing more sediment and et cetera into the lake and causing another issue, and at the same time, not putting anybody's homes in jeopardy if we have a very, very wet winter, which seems likely that we're going to continue to have. So when we take away this pilot program, I think that we really, as a city, we need to get our arms around this whole stormwater issue, and what are we going to do with all this extra water that's coming down the hill?
I guess I'm, want to follow up in saying, the, if we move this recommendation forward, the city council, I can't speak for them, but they're in a, they're gathering a lot of information, and I like what Commissioner O'Farrell said, that maybe it's time to rewrite something, if that's the correct term to use. So I'm in favor of recommending, as the motion reads. So I'd call for the question.
Commissioner Anderson? You're okay? Okay. Before we call for the question, I want to add my opinion. Okay. So, like all of you, I am in support of removing the pilot program. And I do want to make one, I want to point something out, and I don't mean to be rude at all. It's just that, at this point, we, if we wanted to rewrite the pilot program or do something different, this was sort of our chance. And I feel like we, that is, that's my understanding at least, is that this was our chance, if we wanted to make changes to the pilot program, that we could do that. It seemed that we are not in favor of changing the pilot program, which is why we're recommending to eliminate it. And I want to say that that's what I'm in support of, but I guess I just don't want to say that we're kicking the can down the road, because I don't think that's appropriate at this time, because I don't, especially with the current development moratorium. I mean, the city council just passed that. Of course, it will expire at some point, but I can't really imagine a time in the future when the community would support subdivisions in the no disturbance area. And so while I am sensitive to the property owners, I feel pretty strongly about that. I also think that the pilot program has just come online since March 2017. It's been open for seven or eight months. I'm not sure exactly when the council did the emergency ordinance, they might have done it right away, so maybe it was never open at all. That's possible. But there aren't any applications, and I think now is the time to remove the pilot program and stick with our development regulations that are in place. Because if one property owner is allowed to do it, you know, is allowed to develop under the pilot program, I feel that it would only be fair to let all four of the subdivisions move forward. So with that, again, I am in support of removing the pilot program. So there is a motion and a second to remove the pilot program. All those in favor of removing the pilot program, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the pilot, the motion to remove the pilot program passes 7-0, or I guess unanimously. So the next item of business is new business. And tonight's new business is the application of current density to land division code. And tonight's, oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to ask for recess at this time. So we are going to take a five-minute break while staff switches out and puts a new presentation All right, I'm going to bring us back if we're ready, if staff's ready. And here's Mr. Thomas, Director of Community Development.
Well, thank you, Chair. Good evening, and the folks that are around here after the break. Second item on our, our agenda this evening is to talk about yet another code amendment. This one is not reviewing, but actually amending a section of code that already exists. So the plan for tonight is we're going to have a work session this evening, so there's no deliberation or recommendation coming from the commission this evening, just a presentation and Q and A, to the extent that you may have some questions for myself or a new introduction we'll make here briefly. One of our senior planners, Ryan Harriman, sitting at the staff table. Ryan has been with us for, I think, a little over a year and a half now, and working as a senior planner, he, this is his first planning commission meeting, is what I understand. He primarily works in our subdivisions and short plats and kind of current planning, development permitting realm. He is a little bit of a subdivision expert, Title 19A. What we're going to talk about tonight is one of his areas that he's frequently working in and working with customers and citizens to help them navigate that series of regulations. So I asked Ryan to come, I'm sure he's going to answer all your questions, actually, after I'm done presenting. So we'll see how that goes. Okay, so a little bit of a recent history lesson here. We're going to talk just for a minute about an emergency ordinance, ordinance 2017 422. That was adopted by the city council on September 5th of this year. And emergency ordinances are a little bit different than regular ordinances in the fact that, under state statute, they can be enacted immediately by a governing body, provided that they go back within 60 days and conduct a public hearing after the fact. And emergency ordinances are good for up to six months. So on September 5th, the council adopted an emergency ordinance prohibiting the circumvention of zoning density within land division. Specifically, and again, the specific section of code we're going to be talking about tonight and then in two weeks, two and a half weeks, is SMC 19A 08190. 19A is our subdivision title in our municipal code. And this section 190, it was not removed, but it was amended to include additional language stating that further division of land would be subject to current zoning densities. And we're going to talk about that some more this evening. Like I said, it's an emergency ordinance, it's good for six months. Council's directive to staff was to then go back and do a full legislative review, which is the normal process that we follow for making policy and regulations. And the first stop, of course, on that train, is to come to the planning commission and work with you and have the planning commission make a recommendation to city council. So tonight is the first step in that process with the planning commission. As outlined in your packet materials, what staff has brought forward are three proposed options for consideration. And we're going to circle back around to these at the end of the presentation with the specific language, but in summary, option one, from your memo, was to revert back to original code language prior to September 5th, before the adoption of the emergency ordinance. Option two would to be essentially affirm the language in the emergency ordinance and have section 19A 08190 remain as it currently is under the emergency ordinance. Option three would be to take essentially option two and tinker with it a little bit Okay. We talked about recent legislative history with the emergency ordinance, so let's go back a little bit further in time to a couple relevant moments where ordinances were passed that are relevant to what we're doing here this evening. So March 2005 is when the city moved from a gross density calculation system for density, which we inherited from King County, to a net density system. June 2010 was the most recent update of our subdivision regulations, again, Title 19A. And this provision that we're discussing, the amendments to, the 19A 08190, was part of that 2010 update. Okay. We're going to spend a couple slides talking a little bit more about density. First, we're going to talk about how we calculate gross density. So in this example here, and I have to credit Kelly with all these graphics that you're going to see here this evening, way beyond my skill set, but the gross density, over here on the right-hand side of the screen, we've got a mocked-up, not to scale, 10 acres. Under gross density, you take the zoning, which in this case is R4, 10 times 4 is 40. That's your gross density calculation. 40 lots would be the yield from this piece. Net density, a little bit more complex. We start with the same 10-acre piece, and we have to back out a few things. We have to back out critical areas and critical area buffers per code. So in this case, we're saying, well, we've got five acres of that, and we have to back out dedicated right-of-ways. In this case, we're saying we've got two acres. So 10 minus 5 minus 2 gets us to a net available acres of 3. Taking the same zoning R4, 3 times 4 gives you a total yield under net density of 12 lots, as shown here on the right-hand side of the screen. Remember this graphic, it's, we're going to come back to it again here as we move through the presentation. Okay, so we talked about density, now we're going to talk about tracks a little bit. What is a tract? Our code, 19A 04340, actually gives a very specific definition as to what a tract is. And it can, as the code defines for us, it can be used for a multitude of purposes, including all those things on the left-hand side of the screen. Our example from last slide, we've defined a little bit more, and we're calling that a wetland there with a buffer, the dash blue line, we're saying that's a critical area tract. When we do a subdivision and we have a wetland and a wetland buffer, we put that into a tract so that that's preserved in perpetuity as a critical area tract. So that's an example of one there. Question, how many tracks are in Samamish? We worked with one of our GIS analysts in our Public Works Department to go into the King County assessor's database, and what you see up here within our city limits, everything in red and yellow is a tract. I'm hesitant to say it's exactly 953, we think it's a minimum of 953, because we think under King County assessor coding, there's probably additional tracks that we haven't been able to pick up yet, and that's something we're going to continue to work on moving forward, so. Am I good to go, Larry? I didn't want to flip it while you were looking at the screen. Okay, good. All right. So we've talked about density, we've talked about tracks, now we're going to kind of put the two together and ask the question, how does this section of code relate to tracks? So from 2010 moving forward, our historic application of this code section was identical to both lots and tracks. We treated lots and tracks the same. When applying this section of code and using it, working with customers, we treated a tract as a lot when we said, everything has to conform to net density provisions. So when you look at this graphic here on the right, that 10 acres, so once that 10 acres is subdivided, our code basically says, you have to go back to the original subdivision of that to consider net density moving forward into the future. The, the reason why we have this section, and why we have lots, and we were treating tracks the same, was to make sure that there was no circumvention of that original net density from the bounds of the, the original parcel to be subdivided at some point down the road. So what you see here, you see, what we've done is we've modified the graphic that we were showing you originally for net density, and we said, well, you know, instead of doing the larger 12 lots like we did, we're going to do smaller 12 lots that still work with setbacks and impervious surface and everything else, and we're going to put that little piece up in the right-hand corner, in the red boundary, into a tract. Okay? So now when we go to the next slide, look what happens. If we're allowed to circumvent the net density, that tract, if we don't apply this section of code, can be further subdivided to a net density of its own at some point down the road. And what happens in this example is, if that was a one-acre tract, well, under the R4 zoning, it becomes four additional lots. So what happened in the application of this section of code over time, we had a property owner ask us back in 2015, it's, it's kind of delineated in your staff memo for you, that's in your packet, and said, well, we really don't agree with your, with, with how you're interpreting throwing tracks under the word lot in this section of code. And, you know, we want to pursue that. So we went through the process described in the memo, and eventually it went from, it went from a request initially at our front counter right out here, all the way up to Superior Court, and a Superior Court judge issued an order in September that said, well, yeah, your, your lots and tracks are, are different in definitions in your code, and you just can't assume that lots are tracks, so this section of code doesn't apply to tracks. Well, that was, that was what prompted the emergency ordinance to clear that up and to add tracks to that section of code, and that's really the foundation of the emergency ordinance and of this legislative review. So to illustrate that a little bit further, I'm going to run through the three options again. So what you see here on option number one, which is, this is the language that existed in our code up until September 5th, okay? You'll see that this section of code starts with a legal lot. And when you read through the six lines that are on the screen, nowhere does it say tract. So our application of this code had been that a legal lot included a tract. And this is what we were corrected on in Superior Court with the court order. So when we go to option two, you'll see now, we've got strike-through. So when we go to Option 2, you'll see now we've got strike-through in red and underline in blue, I believe. Well, this is the amended, this was what was adopted on September 5th, the emergency ordinance. So you can see in the underlying blue on the third and fourth line, we've actually now not only included further division of lot, but alteration of a future development tract or reserve tract. Okay? So that is the key part of this amendment that was adopted on September 5th to kind of close now what was, what was opened up as a loophole. Option 3 is essentially Option 2, only now what we've done, we've went back and worked with our legal counsel and given a little bit further consideration to the emergency ordinance. And the words, starting again on the third line, "future development tract/reserve," that language was included on September 5th, the emergency ordinance. Now we're kind of backing that out, and we're saying, you know, because of the definition of tract in our code, those four words are actually not necessary in this piece of code because a tract is clearly defined in our code. So that brings us really to what I believe is the key point of discussion and consideration for the Planning Commission between now and your next meeting, is really to think about, as you reflect back on the memo and the presentation here this evening, is ask yourself the question, does the Planning Commission want to ensure the city continues to consistently develop at net density? And again, this is the graphic that we showed originally, some slides back now as to how you calculate net density. So as we move forward from this evening, November 2nd is your next meeting. And it will be on November 2nd where you will hold a public hearing and deliberate and hopefully make a recommendation on this to our city council. And they'll be taking up the matter at a later date. So with that, that concludes the staff presentation. I'll turn it back over to the chair. And Ryan will be happy again to answer all your questions, so.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm opening it up for questions. Commissioner Petrich.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So I guess if we're concerned about wordsmithing and unintended consequences of language, is it not simpler to simply say that a lot is a tract and a tract is a lot? And not get all fancy?
Well, that was, that was, that was the key point of what we were actually corrected on in the court order, is that, that's how we were treating, we were treating a tract as a lot.
Oh, I know, but if we just made that explicit in the definition, then doesn't that satisfy the judge?
If we amended the definition instead?
Correct.
So I don't have overheads of both those definitions, but in the definition of a tract, it elaborates, going back, I'll actually flip back a few slides here so you can see it again. Bear with me for a moment. So the definition of a tract also goes into not only the different types of tracks as listed here that you can have, but it also speaks to not using a tract for residential building, okay? So there's some more specificities, and we can certainly bring this back on November 2nd for the commission to take a look at. We'll include it in the memo for you on the 2nd. Those two exact definitions, where then it speaks to a lot definition, which does speak to a lot is intended for the purpose of both residential and other types of development, building development.
Okay, so then it sounds like through this process of designating a tract, and then they're converting it into lots, and there's a process
Correct.
For the land becoming something else. Okay.
Yep.
I just, Jeff, if you could explain to me a little bit again about the Superior Court ruling and what exactly they said. I have somewhat of an idea of what you're saying, that they, they want us to define better what we mean by a lot and what we mean by a tract. Is that what it is? And they said that our definition would
Yeah, they actually, the order was probably less words than what you just stated there, but Ryan's bringing it up right now on the screen for you.
Okay.
So this is an actual copy of the court order. And Ryan, do you want to, do you want to direct them to the specific words that are on it?
Right.
So I don't know if you can see the cursor on your screen there. So I'll read it for the folks in the audience here. Might be a little hard to see, sitting back towards the back of the room. It says, "With regard to SMC 19A, excuse me, 08190, the court finds that the use of the word 'lots' in that provision means lots and does not include tracks such as a future development tract owned by the petitioner." So that was, that was the crux of the order, was that we were saying, well, we were treating tracks as lots in that application of code, and the court says, well, no, you can't do that. They're different.
If I'm understanding correctly, a tract is something that you cannot use for residential housing?
Correct.
Correct.
That's in the definition.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What other, other examples around the city would this apply to? And, and just give me an idea, what scenarios?
Yeah, so in this particular case, it was a tract that was identified for future development. There are other, there's actually, as we got talking with our legal counsel, we came to the realization that it could potentially apply to any tract, hence we showed you that graphic of the city with the 900-plus tracks that are within the city currently. There's a potential for changing regulations in the future. Let's, just an example, let's say stormwater infrastructure came to, significant stormwater infrastructure came to portions of the city where stormwater tracks in developments that had been prior to were no longer necessary. That would leave open the opportunity to possibly abandon those previous stormwater tracks, abandon that infrastructure, platamen, platament, do a plat amendment from that original subdivision to remove the stormwater contingency and use that tract for something So you can start going through all the different types of tracks and say, well, if that use was abandoned for some reason at some point in the future, it could apply in a large number of instances, in addition to just tracks that are specifically labeled for future development or have no specific label, just labeled as a tract.
And Jeff, then if you had a tract and then, so let's say it was stormwater, like you said, and then you decided not to use it for that anymore, it was no longer needed. So then is it possible then that that tract could then be redeveloped into residential housing? Or is that still something, no, you still cannot do that? It has to be used for those other uses, like
Right, so, yeah, so that kind of comes back to the crux of the amendment here. To be able to, to divide that law, to divide that tract, excuse me, into lots for further development
You would be exceeding the net density.
That tract would have to comply with the net density provision of the city.
Right. Okay, 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 thank you.
I can't see why your Option 3 just doesn't cover all of this and, and solve the problems. It seems like it says that the, we're going to, we should base it on net density because that really is the carrying capacity of the land. That's what can actually be built on it. That makes sense to me. But could we consider what I was thinking? And I don't know if we have the, would it help us meet our GMA requirements, et cetera? If we said that because net density is short of gross density, why don't we look at giving those extra units to the TDR program and allowing property owners to use those and have those to sell or to build elsewhere because the land can't carry it?
So that actually, that's a really good question. And it actually, the subject of TDRs almost came up in your first order of business this evening, when we were talking about the elimination of the pilot program and about potential options for landowners in that area. I don't necessarily want to delve back to the pilot program, but I will say this. TDRs are a powerful tool that, we already do have code within our Sumamish Municipal Code, our development regulations, related to TDRs. So we do have a mechanism, and we have identified sending sites and a receiving site, our town center, for TDRs. I believe what we're going to have to do, as the subject of TDRs is coming up more and more frequently, not only with our city council, it's coming up here with the Planning Commission, but also coming up with citizens and property owners as well, both in property owners that are potential sending sites for TDRs and property owners that are potential receiving sites in our town center. So that, that is a subject that actually Kelly and I have spent some time talking about, that we want to bring back to the commission and also to city council to frame TDRs up for you, what we have now, why we have them, what the sending sites look like, what the receiving site looks like, and talk about, really, going back and revisiting what we have to see if we can actually make it better and easier to use moving forward to the future. And it certainly, there certainly could be situations like what you're suggesting, Commissioner, where, yeah, that would be applicable in possibly some situations like this. So it's a really good question.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have one question. I was hoping you'd give me just a really short summary of what the hearing examiner had to say about it, because you had, you wrote an interpretation, and then the hearing examiner had backed that up.
The hearing examiner did affirm the staff's, the director's interpretation. So then it was the hearing examiner's decision that was actually appealed to Superior Court, and that was reversed in the order that you just saw there a moment ago on the screen.
And then the other thing I just want to draw the commissioner's attention to is the actual, you know, subtitle of the piece of code that we're looking at. It is the circumvention of zoning density prohibited. You know, it's like sometimes you read the words and you forget to look at the title, but this is actually what we're talking about. You know, the idea was to prohibit the circumvention of zoning density and make sure that the, that, you know, the net density was applied consistently throughout the city, which is what seems like has been done. So in my opinion, Option 3 is the only fair option. Since the city's been treating tracks as lots for the last 12 years, it would only seem fair that we make this amendment, you know, the judge that found that we need to add tracks, it seems like something that's pretty easy to do, and go ahead and do that and continue, like Jeff's is recommending, to consistently apply net density to all subdivisions, lots, tracks within the city.
I have, I think the number 3 is the best option. And, but I think the language is very convoluted. It is to me. So I took the advantage of filling out something on this form, and I'm not going to bother the whole commission with it, but I would like you to take a look at it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, with that, I think we're ready for the next item of business, which actually is public comment for this item. It would be public comment for the only non-agenda item tonight that is not a public hearing item. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Mary.
Mary Wichter, 408-208 Avenue Northeast in Sumamish. I really just have a question for either the Director of Community Development or the Senior Planner. If you're a landowner or if you're researching things and you go into King County Parcel Viewer and you click on a parcel, like where I live, if you click on my house, it says I'm lot with a lot number as part of an ad, which is a subdivision or development. But sometimes when you click on them, it says tract or portion of a tract. Does that mean that, does that give you the legal definition? Is whether your legal description in King County Parcel Viewer says lot or tract?
The, the question is, does it give you the definition?
Well, you're saying there are tracks and lots, but if you want to know what you own, you own it by the legal definition of it. And if the legal definition of it is, has the word tract in it or has the word lot in it, doesn't that define what you own?
So Ryan might chime in here, but my understanding, so we actually had one of our GIS analysts do this work for us, that map that was produced. But my understanding is, when you go into the Assessor's database, if it is identified as a tract, then
It's a tract.
Those, those tracks showed up on that map this evening.
And even if it's a portion of a tract, is it a tract?
Yes.
Okay. Because the comment that I have for the Planning Commission is, I definitely know that there are tracks that exist or portion of a tract that exist, and they're in like around a creek area, and they're either owned by an individual or owned by an HOA or owned by the city. And they're, some of them are very large, like 12 acres. So if you did an R4 zoning, 12 acres would allow you to have 4 times 12 or 48 homes. And if you've got that open space or a tract that's not defined as reserved for something, you could build like almost 50 houses in it around a creek area. So you definitely want those cracks to be applied under the net density. You don't want them to be allowed to not be part of your code and get the gross density because that could really hang up things for what those tract designations were. So I just want to clarify that. So if it's in legal description, it says tract, there are some that are very large that don't have houses built on them. But if you allowed gross density to happen, I think it would be a really bad thing for this city and some of the areas that you're trying to protect, including streams. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Collins, just, just a point of clarification. When we did the, when we did the search through the Assessor's parcel database, it provided us with 411 tracks. And then we had to use the tools of the GIS analyst to pull the rest of the 500 tracks into the map that you saw previously on the screen. So there's definitely a discrepancy with the information provided by the Assessor's database, but we're going to further grind that out and farm that information down so we can get an accurate count of the tracks in the future.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Stickney? I haven't heard from you in a while.
Planning Commission, well, I've been, is this on? Okay. I'm going to request, can I use my three-meeting-ago placeholder to talk about the housing strategy plan? Because on that evening and the subsequent meetings have all gone way over, so there hasn't
Go ahead, it's fine.
Time for the comment. I'll keep this really high level. I felt that Arch and staff did a good job at that meeting. And I want to jump a little bit into the weeds and stay at the 30,000-foot level, as Jeff's predecessor used to say. Our comprehensive plan, it does a great job at dealing with two of the three major foundations of housing. It has a lot of emphasis on community character, and that is a really big deal. It has our, our growth target, which is our share of the Puget Sound region, regional growth as allocated by the Office of Financial Management into the entire state. Most of the growth is coming to the west side. But what our, our comp plan does not deal with is specific numbers for internal housing needs and wants over time, over a cycle of life, that are tied to two major Sumamish engines. Those two engines are, we have a lot of single-family homes here, and most folks that come to Sumamish, not all, but most, come here first when they have a family and buy a single-family home. We also have jobs that people work here. Well, as people come, they tend to like our community. And what we have never worked on is to have housing, and you guys know I stutter, and there's a few B-words here I need to say. The thing that I am working with the city council on is to, is to bring precise data on internal needs and wants for our owned community, which is not to attract new folks into the city, but it's to accommodate and retain our own over cycles of life through what I call housing balance. And that is what my comment is about this evening. And I have a handout, which is the 30,000-foot level. Now, this next statement is my own statement, and it may only have meaning for me. For a while, I thought I had figured out the tip of the iceberg. But I realized now, after about a year, that that tip was its own iceberg, and there was a tip of that tip. And that's where I'm operating at now, and that's where the strength is. So what I've handed out to you are seven needles in a haystack of what housing balance would mean in Samamish on one side. And on the back are the four major presentations that we have been providing to city council about this. And tonight, I'm not going over those four presentations. They're into the weeds. But let's talk about the holistic and whole principles and outcomes. The first two are simply Samamish relative to internal needs and wants. We have a oversupply of large, single-family homes citywide based on economics and demographics of who lives here, and we don't have enough smaller and more affordable homes. And by the way, this is a huge, important comment. Eighty percent of our households are above 100% AMI. So housing balance is not about affordable housing in a vacuum. It's about housing affordability for all economic and demographic segments, and only a few of those segments will need subsidy. So housing, housing balance internally is about figuring out cycle of life housing needs for all of our folks over time. It will call for lessening single-family homes citywide relative to our, our build-out from an internal point of view, not from a market point of view, two hugely different things. It'll call for more smaller and more affordable homes in centers. Those two things will enable the next three, which is to reduce traffic and car use. And as, as David Pyle said, it is counterintuitive. It is counterintuitive. But lessening single-family homes and, and putting homes in centers which generate a lot less traffic and creating critical mass in our town center for internalizing trips within the city and very effective transit will significantly lower traffic over what is planned for and zoned for. It'll create tremendous wealth for the community, and wealth is in four areas: social, transportation, financial, and the environment. And it'll help set right several issues. Don't have time to go over them, but several. Those three things lead to the last part. Having a community that has housing that is sustainable and inclusive, custom fit with a Cinderella shoe fit to who we are as a community over a cycle of life, which we've never planned for. And that will enrich the overall quality of life in Samamish. And that is what will bring community consensus on character. The city's done an awesome job at, you know, preserving the environment. We've worked hard on character and aesthetics. We have a wonderful, public-built environment. But the private-built environment, housing, we need to right-size our housing for, for a cycle of life, and then custom-fit economics to it for who we are, and rounding out that is what will, will enrich the overall quality of life in Samamish. Stay tuned, a lot more to come. But the city council now has these things on the back, and there's a lot here that is all positive, and there's only one negative, and it is perceptive. Here's a last comment. The issue in Samamish is not about growth. It's about whether increases or decreases.
Mr. Stickney, please.
Positive or negative. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Okay, does the commission have anything else tonight?
The only thing I could, I think it's a good time to state this. Really appreciate the individuals who are in the room tonight, that whether they spoke or not, that they stay. I think that's important. You are recognized. We see you here, so thank you for being here. I think it's important.
Any other business?
I have a comment about the meeting. Because again, I was confused. And I thought that it was very clear that the first one was to get rid of the pilot program. And then I saw the agenda two was going to talk about erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies. I thought, oh, good. I will save my comments for that, for number two agenda. That didn't happen because we got rid of the pilot program. So here I'm sitting with all my comments on erosion hazards, and we're done. So I'm a little upset about that. And I don't think it was clear that if the pilot program was dismantled, we were not going to move to agenda item number two.
What is, we did, we definitely, definitely did add the old business item. I think what you're saying is that you wanted to...
Discuss it as the hazardous, erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies, not at, under the, get rid of the pilot program.
Well, staff gave a presentation. I opened it up for questions. If anyone had any questions about the erosion hazard, sensitive water bodies issue, you could have asked it then. If you wanted to make an amendment to the motion, you could have said so.
I didn't want to amend the motion. I wanted to discuss it per what it was called out in the agenda. And I don't think that that was clear, that we were going to not have that discussion.
I still don't understand. What part did you want to talk about? That's what I'm not certain about.
I wanted to talk about infiltration and how I think it, it is naive to think you can take and put downspouts and retain water on properties and, and put flow control on properties and not, and expect that water to go down and not come out somewhere where it's...
Are you saying you wanted to look at the actual development regulations that staff wrote? Is that what you're talking about?
I wanted to look at the regulations for hazardous, what do they call it? Erosion, right. I wanted to look at those regulations, separate from the pilot program, because I think that was the way it was introduced to us.
I think I'm going to defer to the director for a second, if...
So I'm not sure that was, I'm not sure the agenda was propped it that way. The agenda, old business, erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay no disturbance area pilot program. And then the agenda indicates that we're having a public hearing and deliberation.
Yeah.
And then item two, which, which was something totally different, which is what we just finished discussing a few minutes ago, related to density and circumvention of net density. So if Commissioner Garrison, perhaps, I'd be happy to follow up and we can sit down and talk about that, because I'm, I'm not seeing in the agenda where we're going to be having a discussion about the other regulations, so...
Okay, I have that agenda right here, and I'll show it to you. I picked it up here at City Hall.
Okay, sure, yeah. And I mean, I've got it right in front of me as well, so we can certainly compare agendas and talk about that.
If there is no objection, I move to adjourn.
Seconded.
In favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And that passes unanimously. So we are adjourned at 7:55.